Okay, we're live. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry. All right. Okay, first item, or second item, I guess, is approval of the agenda, and we do have one addition. Did I get a new agenda with the information on the back from Libs paving? This is to discuss a potential motion of intent for an additional appropriation for 2,900. So, we'll just add that, I guess.
A.
Yeah, under 7A. If that's okay.
Make a motion to approve the amended.
Okay, motion made by Cory to approve as amended.
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, next up is public comments, and we don't have any. Body sign up. So, next on the agenda is RJL Solutions.
Before I get into the two docket items tonight, I want to introduce Kristi Powell with our team. Kristi joins our Evansville office as Economic Development Director. So you'll see her face around. She and I will be working together to work with the county council, county commissioners, as well as advanced projects in the county. So, excited to have her. She came from EREP, so we're just really excited to have her on the team.
Welcome.
In terms of the first two items, I'm really excited to share that over the last couple of months, we've been working with Webwheel on a potential expansion of their facility that will result in an expansion of approximately 200,000 square feet. It will be an expansion of their assembly and manufacturing facility, and will result in about $57 million worth of investment in the county. About 15 million of that will be real property, and about 42 million of that will be personal property. As part of this project, they are also retaining all of their existing employees, which is approximately 92 people, and then they will be adding, over the course of the project, an additional 28 people. The petitioner, the applicant, has submitted requests for tax abatements for both real and personal property. In working with them over the last couple of months, the numbers in terms of investment have fluctuated a little bit. The original investment was supposed to, or the initial, the personal property investment was supposed to be in the neighborhood of 52 million. However, after getting some better quotes and pricing from their suppliers, that price, or that threshold, has come down to 42 million. So, they've not taken anything away. They've not changed anything. It's just a matter of where pricing is coming in currently. With that said, they're anticipating starting construction in January of 2026. Their anticipated completion is December of 2027, and then the anticipated completion of the real property would be in 2029. So, it's kind of phasing it in. They're going to get this building built as quickly as they can.
Bless you.
Get this building built as quickly as they can, and then start getting it outfitted with the equipment. Obviously, there's a lead time on purchasing that type of manufacturing equipment, which has been a result in some of their anticipated timeline. I do have two resolutions for you to consider this evening. The first is a real property, real property tax abatement declaratory resolution, and the second one is a personal property tax abatement resolution. Now, both of these are just declaratory, so they are just the initial step, if you will, in the tax abatement process. Essentially, what happens after a declaratory resolution, there is a public hearing that is scheduled, and that public hearing, assuming that both of these are adopted this evening, that public hearing would be scheduled for October 23 at your regular scheduled meeting. At that point, you would entertain and take questions or comments from the public, remonstrances, or any concerns that the public may have regarding these abatements. You take those under advisement, and ultimately either confirm the declaratory resolution, amend and confirm the resolution, or rescind the declaratory resolution and say, no, we're not giving any tax abatements. So, that's kind of the process that this will follow. In addition to the tax abatements, we understand that there's a little bit of a bond left on the original Webwheel. However, that will, that will fall off. Our understanding is that will fall off before these take place. However, between the declaratory and the confirmatory, those details will need to be finalized, so the council can make an informed decision at your next meeting. I will also say that these are preliminary estimates based on what they've shared with us. There is not a depreciation calculated into these yet. The applicant is working through their calculations. They've sent some preliminary numbers, but they're still finalizing the depreciation schedule that they'll follow. One of the things they had noted to me was that the depreciation for the equipment, some of the equipment will not follow the same schedule as all of the equipment. I've not informed the applicant that they need to be here tonight. I told them that we could handle this, that I'd be happy to present on their behalf, but that I would encourage them to have somebody present at the next meeting. I think it's important to also recognize that the applicant had an opportunity at two other locations. So, they were considering us as well as two other locations, and they chose Perry County to make this investment. So, it's pretty significant. Obviously, going to be adding jobs to the marketplace, which is great, and just an all-around great project with a partner that's already here. So, I'm going to hand out a couple of things for you tonight, just so you can look through these. You've already gotten these via email. This is a copy of the real property tax abatement resolution, declaratory resolution, I'm sorry. In it are several exhibits. I'm also handing out preliminary illustrative analysis on what the abatements would look like. Originally, we were anticipating, like I said, a higher personal property investment. So, when they came back with an adjusted investment on personal property, we made some adjustments in our recommendations. But ultimately, what you see here in the declaratory resolution outlines that you would be designating this area as an economic revitalization area. It would be for the property that Webwheel currently owns, and it would preliminarily run for a period of 10 years. The applicant has requested a full 10-year abatement. We have developed this schedule that I've just handed out to you, the illustrative tax abatement over that 10-year threshold. So, you will notice that the assumed value is $15 million at the current tax rate. We don't know what future tax rates will be, so we always just use the current tax rate to calculate the abatement. On the left side, you'll see what the total real property investment would result in profit, what property taxes would result from that investment as that schedule fades in. So, in year one, 2028, we're recommending 100%. Year two, 95. Year three, 80%. And then it slowly decreases from there, all the way to year 10, which is 5%. And then year 11, essentially, then it would be taxed at the full tax rate, and then there would be no more abatement. So, on the left side, you see what the abatement, or what the property taxes look like with the abatement. On the right, you see what they look like without the abatement. So, again, not assuming any depreciation here yet. That will be in the final numbers that we present. You see that on the left, approximately $1.3 million, $1.322 million in real property taxes would be generated over the 10-year period. However, if no abatement was given, it'd be around $2.6 million in real property taxes. So, they're going to neck around $1.29 million, or nearly $1.3 million. Any questions on the real abatement of the property itself, before I move into personal property?
I think it's a wonderful thing. It's exactly what our community needs.
Okay. I'm going to move on to the personal property. So, as I mentioned, in addition to the $15 million real investment, they're also making a $42 million personal property investment. So, this is a second declaratory resolution. These have to be considered separately, which is why there's two. This resolution also recommends a 10-year tax abatement. It also sets the public hearing at the same date as the real property, and, yeah, the analysis. So, this is the illustrative schedule again, so this is for personal property. Again, on the left-hand side, you'll see that property tax pays in over that 10-year period, which would result in approximately $3.7 million in property taxes being generated, again, assuming no depreciation at this point. Would assume about a $3.7 million property tax generation, whereas if you look on the far-right side, over that same 10-year period, if they didn't receive any tax abatement, it'd be about $7.3 million. The net savings around $3.6 million. So, you know, in total, they're looking at basically $4.9 million worth of abatement over a 10-year period. You don't have any requirements or any policies in place that would require you to give a 10-year abatement. You could do a seven-year abatement. You could do a three-year abatement if you wanted. In looking at all the options possible and, you know, wanting to be cognizant of the potential impacts of Senate and World Act I, which we still don't know what that total impact is going to be. Everybody across the state is still trying to figure that out. We think this is the most generous schedule while also protecting the county's future interests. In addition to these abatements, the Redevelopment Commission preliminarily committed earlier this year a $200,000, up to a $200,000 commitment towards water and sewer improvements on-site. We are going to be working with the Redevelopment Commission. In fact, a meeting's already been scheduled for October 6 for the Redevelopment Commission to take action on that. Following their action, it would go to the county commissioners, and following that, it would come to the council. One of the things that we want to ensure is that that money is not just given out ahead of time. We want to make sure that it's used for the intended purposes. So, part of that recommendation will include that the money be committed on either a reimbursement level, so they submit, you know, reimbursement invoices, or that some type of proof be provided that that work is done. So, with that, you have both resolutions. Like I said, this anticipates a public hearing on October 23. We will be here, as well as the applicant, to answer any questions. Over the next 30 days, we'll be sending out notice to all the taxing units as required by the law, as well as sending notice to the paper for the public hearing itself. With that, I'd be happy to have you answer any questions.
I did want to let everybody know that I sent this information to Rod, and he's reviewed it, and are we good to go? Yeah, it's in this.
Rod, I actually added that after I sent to you, so.
And I think you guys are familiar with that process. I think you've done it in fact in certain areas.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody's willing to invest all that money, create all these jobs.
I think so, too. It's what we're trying to achieve here, so. We appreciate their investment in choosing Perry County, for sure. Does anybody have any questions about this? Or, I know we sent this ahead of time to us. If you have questions, would you want to? If not...
Is that a, is that a firm pointing at you pretty well?
Yeah, so, yeah, as part of their application, assuming the abatements are approved, there is an annual certification that's required. It's on their CF1 form that would require them to show evidence that they've met the commitments that they've made to the county.
Right.
As part of any abatement approval, we will recommend an agreement between the county and the applicant be signed that includes clawbacks. So, if they don't meet those thresholds, maybe they don't, maybe they don't invest $15 million. Maybe they invest $7 million. Maybe they don't buy $42 million worth of real personal property. Maybe they buy $10 million. Well, that's going to change what the county's willing to give, right? It's going to change your decision, or would impact your decision, most likely. So, we're going to recommend an agreement be in place that requires them, even though they're already required under the law, to file that CF1, but then also gives the county clawback authority to pull anything back or adjust if they need to in a future year, if they don't meet that threshold.
It's kind of that, that form that we go through every year with our abatements, where the other industry here, they tell you how many they have, and they give you an update.
Now, you said that we do have an option of going with a three-year or seven-year or something like that. At what point in time do we consider those things? Is this for the next time, or is that something we've got to decide on tonight?
No. So, essentially, what can happen is, right now, the way this is set up is for a 10-year. If you want to look at an alternative schedule, and that could mean, you could keep the 10-year schedule, and you could say, we're going to give 100% for the first five years, and then when things end after that. Or, it could mean, we're literally just going to give a five-year abatement, and, you know, it'll be 80% year one, 60% year two, et cetera.
But you're concerned about the sensitivity because they were also considering other sites?
Correct, correct. So, this was the most beneficial that we felt for them and the county recognizing the potential impacts of SEI. So, at the next meeting is when you would decide ultimately, do we confirm the resolution that you're adopting here tonight or considering tonight, or do we amend it and then confirm? So, you could say, okay, well, we're going to amend it. We're not going to give a 10-year. We're going to give a seven-year. And you could do that at that meeting.
When it comes to the personal property, that the depreciation that you don't have at this time will figure very, very large in the 10-year, because a lot of this personal property will have depreciated down to very small numbers.
Correct.
Okay. We don't have a lifespan idea kind of for how quickly this stuff will depreciate, or did you say that there was a?
So, they've sent some preliminary numbers, or some preliminary timeline, but it's just for the first couple of years. It's not, it's not the total timeline. So, those are some of the pieces that we're still needing.
We just need to realize that it is an advantage, but the property tax, or the property taxes that we will realize in the future.
Will be different.
Will be on a very much depreciator bit of personal property, and I assume the building to a small extent as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, the real, the personal property will depreciate more significantly.
Yes.
Which is also why you, you know, you want to be careful on what level of, you know, abatement you're giving, because if it starts depreciating too quickly, or if it depreciates on a faster schedule than you're generating taxes, then, you know, it creates a situation where you're not going to collect what you thought you were, or they're, they won't save what they thought they would save.
Which will affect their decisions.
Correct.
Does anybody have anything else for Jonathan? If not, do I read these resolutions by title only, or is that acceptable, or do we need reasonable? Title only?
Title only is all you need to do for me, but I don't know if Rod has it.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to verify that that was okay, because this isn't a public hearing, so.
No.
Okay. If everybody's okay with it. Okay. I just want to make sure we're doing this right. So, I'm going to read the resolution for the personal property. Is that fine, to do that one first?
I would do the real.
You want to do the real? Okay, yep. You can do the resolution for the real property first. I'll read it by title. A resolution designating a portion of Perry County, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area and preliminarily approving real property tax abatement for Webwheel Products, Inc. So, I'll entertain a motion if...
I'll make that motion to approve.
David makes a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Second by Stan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion passes six to zero. And the second one is the resolution designating a portion of Perry County, Indiana, as an economic development area and preliminarily approving personal property tax abatement for Webwheel Products, Inc. So, I'll entertain a motion for that one.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brad.
Second.
Second by Gail. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We will get notice of the poll here.
Okay, and you will, I think I heard you say this, but you will get all the notices to the newspaper and all the appropriate agencies.
Yeah.
So, you won't have to do that, I guess. She won't?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, she need to put them on the website or anything?
It would.
Okay. Oh, these are the ones that we signed. Okay. Do we need to go ahead and do that, or?
He will do it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jonathan. I think it's a wonderful thing. And thank you, Webwheel, for your investment. Okay. The next up is Tara Lucas, health nurse, health department. This is a public health nurse supervisor, right?
So, first, I know that you guys have seen the updated 2026 requested HFI budget. So, obviously, I'm here to try and get approval for that. Did you have any additional questions? It did reflect $10,000 from the ambulance service.
I didn't get to review it last week when you sent it during the budget stuff, but I, I've had a chance to review now. Does anybody have any questions for Tara on this? I saw the changes that you made there, so. Appreciate that. We can go ahead and prove this today?
If you can go on it today. I mean, if that's what you're planning to do, that would be awesome.
I mean, it's before the deadline, but you can go ahead and turn it in, right?
It would be great if I could get it wrapped up before I leave.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So, who?
Motion made by Cory to pass budget.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes six to zero.
Second. I am resigning, which I know that you guys know. Cory, Brad, and Commissioner Pam Jaminsky, I would like to thank you for taking the time to acknowledge my email. I've had a great nine years here. We have grown this health department. Makes me very sad. So, I would like your permission to post my position.
Just post it right away, and then?
As soon as possible.
Okay, and you said Mallory's not interested in moving that? Okay. Does anybody have any discussion? There was one thing. I was, I remember in the job description before, when Sarah was here, right? So, Sarah was an RN, and then it got changed to...
It was open to both at one point. I don't know why it was written that way, but it should have been corrected.
Okay.
Yes.
When Dr. Markham came forward and he asked to change it to an LPM.
Yes.
So, I just didn't know, and I fully understand why, because you were already there and you have knowledge of that department, right, already?
And there's no requirements for it to be an RN.
Okay.
We worked on that before, today anyway.
Okay. Yeah, I just remember something about a few years ago, right? So, I just didn't know if anybody was aware of that, or, you know, that was just something that, I didn't know if, yeah, if anybody was interested in, like, if that mattered or made a difference. You said it's not a requirement.
No.
I don't know that it needs to be restricted to LPM, like is reflected in here, so.
Maybe change the verbiage.
RN slash LPM, something like that.
RN slash LPM, is that okay? Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Just change RN slash LPM on this job description? Okay.
Yeah.
Tara, we appreciate your time and efforts and how you have grown the department.
I appreciate that. We have, we have worked very, very hard, and I hope that you guys continue to put faith in this department and grow public health, because it's important. Thank you. We appreciate it.
If, if there's no questions on this, other than, do we need a motion? Let's just make a motion to change that to say RN slash LPM, if anybody's interested in that.
I'll make that motion.
A motion made by Brad.
I second it.
Second by David. Sorry, you'll get one, I think. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And just, so you get changed in there? Yeah. Can you get that up, David, so she can get it out right away, and then you'll put it on the website? Is there anywhere else that you posted? Just the website?
It's not me. We take your members' office.
Can we do it on, in view? Trying to think, is there anything, like, the state has a website or anything?
I'm sure there is. I can share it across before I leave.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay.
I think we need to make a motion to approve posting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
So, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion made by Cory.
I second it.
Second by David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion passes six to zero. Thanks, Cory. Keeping me on track. Okay. Next is, next are the minutes, and I didn't.
Can you reserve any of those?
Uh, no. Okay. Did, did everybody have a chance to review those, or do we need to just hold them until the next one? Is that a problem?
They came at 2:38.
Oh, I didn't. I saw them right before I left, but if that's okay. If it's okay, I would like to table them, just because I haven't had a chance to review, but if anybody else is...
I mean, it's all right to review them at your next meeting, isn't it?
There's no. It just holds up them getting on Gateway. I can't put anything on Gateway or Dead End stop till you do.
I mean, you're within your time.
Yeah. I do apologize for missing the tattoo notes. Cory, obviously, no one else noticed missing to review them, because I didn't, I emailed them out literally the minute that Cory messaged me, so.
Okay. We'll just, if that's okay, I'll entertain a motion to table those.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Stan.
Second.
Second by Gail. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion passes six to zero. All right. Next is additional appropriation request. Do you want to say that?
We have one here from the clerk. It's for additional travel to cover charges for the Indiana Election Division to be held in Indianapolis, December 15 to July 17. Registration, hotel, per diem. The registration would be, is 200. The hotel's 266, and the per diem's 300. So, it's short by 850.
And this is something they're required to do, right?
Correct.
What I thought. And, and she has some of the money. She just needs the additional appropriation for the $850.
I'll make a motion to approve. There's no further discussion.
Okay. Motion made to approve by David.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion passes six to zero.
The next one is an additional appropriation through our CGET fund for our building maintenance courthouse, here at the courthouse, as I let you guys know last week, due to the expenses of the ill chiller we have here. I don't know any other way to say it.
You say ill?
The ill chiller. We have to, we, we have expended... We have to, we, we have expended the entire $10,000 that we had appropriated. So this $5,500 will pay the $4,952.70 in invoices that I have right now, and will leave, you know, $500, $500, $600 to get us through the end of the year. This is per request of the commissioners, instead of doing an additional appropriation out of general. Pay for that CIGIT.
Have any questions on that? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made to approve by David. Second by Gail. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion passes six to zero. Okay.
Next, we've got a couple transfers from the highway. The first, well, they're both for the same purpose. I'll tell them, um, first one is for, what was it first? MVH Highway. Transferring $200,000 from line item of bituminous to new equipment for purchase of dump trucks.
Okay. I had something on this. So this, um, this equipment is the three dump trucks that you talked about last.
The help there for the three dump trucks out of $200,000.
Okay. So you don't have the rest of it? This is just what you have so far?
We will have to do an additional appropriation. I'm not sure of the figure between 100 and 150,000 together.
Back to my office if you can hear me. I'm going to get it.
Okay.
Additional appropriation, of course, couldn't be presented on here. I didn't advertise it. You guys can do a motion print-in on it today if you choose, but, uh, um, we don't, it's not a rush as far as that. So I had it to be advertised in October and be in October, but I have it back in my, back in my office. It is coming to a total you were moving. Listen, do you care to run it?
Was it like 550,000?
I'll go again. I know what that is.
For some reason, I was thinking you had said that, but this was like 350, so.
Yeah, we'll actually do additional.
Okay. My only thing with this is, you said you can't, you can only get the trucks. Now you wouldn't be able to get the beds, or?
We can't get the beds until sometime in January or February. But if I go ahead and order, we can lock this price down on the trucks.
Okay. Your other ones are running, but they're just getting old and they need to be replaced, or?
One of them's got the engine out of it. Uh, one of them's missing pretty bad. We try to keep enough plow trucks that we can get the road plowed in a reasonable amount of time.
Right.
And we haven't purchased any new trucks for, since 2018, or I believe it is the last one we got.
And these are all single axle, or are there any triaxle?
They are all single axle. We, we've got two tandems that we run in snow routes, and they have to run on the big wider roads because they can't turn around on the narrow road. It's now getting hung up. You get the salt bed on there and the plow on the front, and it takes a pretty good area to turn the truck around.
So this money will help, but you'll need an additional appropriation and.
This is what the appropriations that are already there. Taking 100K, um, 100,000 from MVH, new equipment, which is already appropriated there. 70,000 from local road and street, new equipment. 33,450 from Surwell and Tax, new equipment. So those are already appropriated. I can't breathe right now, so. Any of those transfers?
Yeah, sure. Okay, transfer Surwell and Tax, 150,000 from by two minutes, I don't say it right, to new equipment. Transfer MVH 200,000 from by two minutes to new equipment, and transfer MVH 61,000 from truck driver to new equipment for a total of 411,000. Request an additional appropriation for 100,000 out of MVH unrestricted, or in addition to that? For 664,405?
Yeah.
Okay. Did, did you bid this out?
We are, we are in the process of that, yeah. Bid's being bid.
Okay. The only issue I have with this, because I know you need trucks, I mean, I know, that's, I mean, I'm not questioning that. I, I don't want you to have junk equipment by any means, is, um, just like with the, uh, the, well, a couple things. With the sheriff's department, when they requested, um, vehicles, we asked them to put together a plan and come up with a vehicle rotation, which they did. And we're going to be working on that real soon here. But I, I kind of was curious about what the plan is for the replacement of these, or we need to, I feel like we need to do that same type of thing that we asked them to do with this.
That would be great if we could do that. We have 76 pieces of equipment out there. Not counting drags or blades or snow plows or any of that. And I don't know how you put them on a five-year rotation. Some of the equipment will last 20, 30 years. Some of them won't. Tractors and loaders and things like that, you know, we get, it's not unusual to get 25 or 30 years out of them. So I don't know how we, I mean, I don't know how to put it on a five-year rotation.
Well, it doesn't have to be five-year, but I was just thinking, like, especially the large things, maybe not all the real small stuff, but the, the bigger purchases, like the dump trucks, and like you said, the dozers or the tractors or stuff like that, if we can. Uh, and we can focus just on these trucks even right now.
That really could be your estimate according to history. You've got a history of the trucks and stuff that see how long they, they last and stuff.
Yeah.
Just get it on some sort of a rotation like that. I mean, the history says a lot. I mean, I know some trucks break down more than others, you know, sooner, but, uh, but that would give us a lot better idea on, on how to budget, for one thing.
You said you would be able to lock in the price.
Yes.
Have you talked to dealers about that, at different dealers, about locking in the price for this year, or?
I've only talked, I've talked to Kendor's, and I've talked to a fair lot of them. I think they're, and maybe possibly Mac, I haven't talked to them, are the only ones that go, that meet, will meet the specifications.
Uh huh.
That has London cabs and stuff, what we need out there. The Internationals, all them, unless they've changed, they, they can't meet specifications.
So that the two you have talked to said, have encouraged you to go ahead and buy them now to lock in a price? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And when do they, did they have a schedule, say, you got, we got to know by October the 20th, or something like that?
Of course, you know, a guy selling them wants to know right now.
Yesterday.
They haven't given me a date, but I called before the meeting, or called, uh, Tuesday to make sure the price was still the same. Because this price is a few months old now. And he said the truck prices have not, will not change. But they don't know when, when they will.
Right.
Or they won't tell me or don't know possibly when we'll.
So the two that you have talked to have come up with similar discussions?
Yes.
The only other thing that I worry about with this is not, I mean, I know we need to, that's part of the plan, I think, is coming up with where the money comes from, but the, that, uh, bituminous is for, we could use it for paving, or?
Well, the reason we're taking bituminous is when we did this budget for this year, we didn't know, which I'm very grateful the commissioners are putting up the matching funds. We didn't know. I try to be ready.
Sure.
For community causes and have the money for our match. And we, that's what this money was put in bituminous for, was to make the match. When the commissioners, when Randy said they would do the match on this, which, um, tickled us to death, and we've got, you know, we can't go out there and pave another few mile road with this money. It costs 161,000 a mile to pave 18 inch, two, or 18 foot wide and two inches deep. And the last road we got ready to pave, it cost $250,000 a mile to get a road ready to pave. If you don't get it ready to pave, there's no use to throw the pavement out there on it, because then a few years it's cracked. So if we ain't going to do it right, I'm not interested in doing it. You know, I, I'm not, don't want to go out there and spend that kind of money. In a few years, the road's busted up.
I don't disagree.
Definitely.
How much did you say it is a mile with everything, once you get the prepping?
To get it ready.
Right now, I guess?
Well, it's been two years since we, no, it was last year, it was 250,000 a mile to get one ready to pave. By the time you ditch it, put the culverts in, and get the base ons that you need. It's, last year was 161,000 a mile to pave it 18 foot wide.
And that's about average, what, I mean, 18 foot wide, two inches?
Yeah, that's what our roads average, yeah.
Okay.
So the 250 figure is, is just the prep, and then you add the 160?
Just the prep.
And then you add the 161 onto that to get?
So we can't take $200,000 out there and say, well, we need to do this, because it's not ready to do. If you ain't going to do it right, there's no use to do it.
Exactly. Got to get the drainage ready.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a lot.
Well, it's really expensive to try to pave roads.
I guess I'm a little concerned also about the other part of it. What do we do with the lease, or what's that going to look like, and anything like that? I mean, I wish it was all together. I, I think, yeah, I wish we could come up with a plan for this and.
We won't have a lease.
Oh, I thought you said you were going to do a lease for the rest of it.
No, this is, this is going to pay for the trucks and the beds and the salt plows and stainless steel salt beds.
Okay, all of that is included. There will be an additional building.
All of that out of this year's budget.
Well, if you add all of this, that Chris talked about for additional, it's a total of 664,000.
Then we won't have to pull with the lease or anything and pay any interest or. I've been trying to stay away from leases. Um, David says he don't remember, but he did tell me he hopes we never done another lease, so I'll try to stick with that till we.
I never.
Hold it please.
He did tell me that.
David's forgetful. Does he might have any discussion or questions for Steve, or how do you feel about, you know?
I can appreciate explaining why, why the bituminous money is not being used. And I think we discussed this at length during budget sessions, so I'm going to make it in kind of motion to approve the request as we all discussed prior to today during the budget.
Would Cory say aye?
Can you, can you say it again?
Motion to approve.
He said motion to approve.
Okay.
Uh, what, because, because it was.
We discussed it before. I just think backpedaling now is not right.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Cory to approve, second by Gail. Any further discussion or questions for Steve? And this is, we're going to, I guess we need to do these separate, don't we?
I'm sorry.
Can you do them separate or together? You want to do them together? Okay.
Both of them.
Both of these transfers together?
Yeah.
And you're, you're okay with that for your second? Okay. All right. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then Steve, I'll advertise that additional, um, uh, in October, and then we'll formally approve it in October. But we've got everything ready, um, for the bids, uh, to be advertised on that day.
So that'll all be in check with what the state wants, because I know it's hundreds, thousands of dollars. They have different rules, so. That's why I just want to make sure, so.
Yep.
What did I say you were doing with the old trucks?
The old ones, we, they've got hundreds of thousands of miles on them. One's engine's out, and it's missing. They're not worth anything. We'll probably have an auction or sell for scrap on these things.
You're not going to license them?
I mean, that.
Any, if you talk about the vehicle, I take the insurance off of it, and, you know, we take the plate off of it and take the insurance off of it.
Okay, so it's not like it's going to be added costs on top of this, where it's kind of like a replacement. You're, you're going to do something to surplus them.
So with three new trucks, you won't have any more. You, some of your three new trucks will result in six trucks. That's what I'm saying. You're going to get rid of three old ones while you're replacing.
Yeah.
And you have all the salt beds and everything you said? This will cover all that?
This includes, this price will include stainless steel salt beds.
Okay. I thought we bought some with ARP or something like.
Yeah, we did. We replaced some, the old metal beds we got, put in solid, you know, a few years, they're rusted away.
Yeah.
So we get stainless beds, which will, with this, we will have all stainless beds on our salt trucks, on the big trucks. And, you know, you don't have any problems with them rusting away. You have to put stuff on the chain and stuff to treat them, but you don't have, you know, they're, they're going to be there from now on. They're not going to rust away.
Excellent. Have you had any luck with your truck drivers?
No.
No? How many do you have?
Got four opening.
And how many do you have currently?
Zero.
Oh. We should have talked about that before this, probably.
But they're not, I mean, everybody out there goes to trucks.
I understand.
They have to have a.
And, and there's no way for them to move this up faster, so you can get them, you know, in case it's bad, you know, early January?
We can get, we can get the trucks, but we won't have the beds.
Well, that's not going to happen.
Right.
Okay. All right. Anything else for Steve? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Libs paving. Okay, we're going to go to, this is the one that we added, libs paving, uh, for the additional appropriation.
So we'd already approved, um, an additional appropriation to be paid out of capital projects for the paving of the courthouse, and it was 98,600. There's some extra areas of patching out there that need attention, so that is an additional 2,900. This will be paid out of capital projects. Um, paving is done, so I kind of want to get this paid, since the work is done. We don't want to wait them. So, um, if I can get a, if you guys are okay with it, get a verbal intent, verbal intent for the additional appropriation out of capital projects, um, the funding is there. No question. And this is at request of commissioners. For additional appropriation.
Yeah, I think they said there was like a structural issue in a couple areas, so something that maybe wasn't seen before that they had to, it just came up during.
I don't know exactly where.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but I, that's what I, I talked to Commissioner Cole, and that's what he was saying that that was for, so. I mean, it had to be fixed. You're not going to have a, a brand-new parking lot with new drainage and everything that's got a couple little structural issues. So, um, I'll entertain a motion of intent if.
I'll make a motion of intent to pay this.
I'll say it.
Okay, motion made by Brad. Uh, second by Stan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, motion passes six to zero. And? I think that's it. Our next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, just monthly meeting, is Thursday, October 23rd at 5 o'clock here in the courthouse. And then our 2026 budget adoption is Thursday, October 9th, 2025 at 5 o'clock. And I'm not sure, we may have another meeting in between there to discuss budget. I'm not sure if we will or not, but if we do, we'll advertise it, so. Okay? If there's nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Stan, second by Brad. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we will get those signed here. Do you need them, or, well, actually.